Of allegiance. May we bow in an attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly father, we say thank you for the night of rest and for this privilege and the opportunity to be present this morning. Thank you for another beautiful day in Washington County. Lord, I pray that we would serve others and, Lord, work for the betterment of our community collectively and throughout this day and this week and moving forward. May we strive for civility and calmness and peace amongst our hearts. Lord, may we honor and please you in all that we do and say, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll move right into looking for a motion for approval of the minutes of August 26, 2025.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Commissioners reports and comments. Mr. Wagner, you want to go first?
Yeah, good morning. Yesterday was, I'm sure everybody's seen it on social media, was the homecoming basically for the A-10 that was made full circle back to Hagerstown. It was amazing, the number of people were there. There was hundreds of people there and it was quite a show after several flybys and greeting of major price by his wife and the presentations. It'll be on permanent display after they decommission it at Hagerstown Aviation Museum. I would encourage anybody that has any interest in a real nice museum to stop out there. I think they're open just about every weekend. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. So today, 23rd of September, 2025, yesterday, our beloved Ice Cream Trail opportunity to earn a T-shirt if you participated in the trail this summer. We had 13 locations. Wonderful opportunity to travel around the county, make some new friends. My wife and I completed it. I had a lot of fun, so we're looking forward to it occurring next year. To also speak with regards to the Aviation Museum and what occurred yesterday, just incredible opportunity for our citizens to witness. Tale number 087, which was produced in 1979 at Fairchild, returned home, to its permanent home. And speaking of benevolence in our community, I've got to mention also on Saturday, Girls Inc. at our Agricultural Education Center had 1,600 participants running across the very muddy trail and they were raising funds for after-school activities for girls right here in Washington County. And in addition to that, I'd like to mention Ryder Jet Center on Saturday night for breast cancer awareness, a massive amount of people there, very successful fundraiser. So the benevolence in our community is inspiring. And to all of those who honor us with their service, I would like to say on behalf of all of us, a very sincere thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, President Barr. I know a lot of our citizens were impacted by the assassination of Charlie Kirk and there was a fantastic memorial service for him on Sunday and there were a number of vigils in Washington County and our surrounding counties in recognition of Charlie Kirk. A real patriot, Charlie Kirk was a man who loved this country. He was driven by his deep faith in God and a courageous spirit as an evangelist. Evangelist, geez, I'm having a problem saying that word. I'll pass up the word. I'm having a problem saying it. He was a conservative who was very affable, smart, knowledgeable, and committed to freedom. He had a real commitment to the exchange of ideas, to listen to other voices, to participate in discussion with respect, with compassion, and with tolerance. As Cardinal Dolan said, he was a modern-day Saint Paul. And the cardinal also said that it would behoove all of us to study Charlie's words and to learn about what he really said and what he really stood for because we can all learn from what Charlie spent his life working on to improve America, to enhance freedom, and to rebuild our country. And I think it's, you know, fitting that there's going to be an October 14th National Day of Remembrance for Charlie Kirk and it's a big loss and I just wanted to make mention of that here because it impacted a lot of our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I too attended the arrival and homecoming of the A-10 Thunderbolt that was built in Hagerstown. I'm in with Commissioner Wagner's comments. Need to go out and visit the Hagerstown Aviation Museum. It's very impressive. They started about 10 to 12 years ago and they've come a long way. I also stopped down to Muddy Mama's event at Marine Grove. She represents Girls Inc., that's where a lot of that money goes to. She told me there was 1,800 some participants in that event and many years ago she lost some of her funding and instead of sitting back and complaining, she did something about it and established the Muddy Mama's, which is now a tremendous success for that program. So to Marine Grove and her 257 some volunteers and 1,800 registrants, thank you very much. Also attended the September meeting of the Washington County Volunteer Fair and Rescue Association, is always going to be out amongst them and being able to talk and a lot of heroes at those meetings from over the years. I also attended the United Way Day of Caring kickoff ceremony and instead of getting my hands dirty, I've got a tradition of going around visiting the sites where employees are volunteering and I think I was told maybe 60 some different organizations. They're doing things in the community that we can't do as government, so I wanted to make sure I get out and thank some of those different organizations and let our employees know very grateful for all that so to all participated and the Heather Guest for her team, thank you very much. And also went and attended the annual Washington County Cares Senior Resource Fair at Homewood this past week. If you remember, we recognized a group called Dementia Friendly Washington County. They were there in full force, but Resource Fair itself had many opportunities for seniors to gain access to health care, investments, so it was well attended and I want to thank that organization and Dementia Friendly Washington County for continuing to help seniors. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Yes, I'd just like to circle the wagons myself. It's obviously a very busy time of the year and as you've heard here this morning, the past week or two is no different than any other time in Washington County. We are extremely blessed. We have a lot of philanthropic activities going on. We have a lot of things like the Aircraft Museum and other museums and different venues in our community that just enhance the quality of life and make it very enjoyable and worthwhile living in Washington County. We are extremely blessed and I think the citizens just need to be a friendly reminder of how blessed we are for a community which sometimes we're considered rural and sometimes we're considered out of the way, but we've got our fair share of amenities that the quality of life is superb. So, and I could go on and on and on, start listing some of the venues, but it would probably get me into trouble. So we're just extremely blessed and it makes it nice to be a part of the community. With that, we'll move right into staff comments and first up is Andrew Eshelman.
Good morning, commissioners. Andrew Eshelman, Director of Public Works. I'm seeking your support and consensus this morning for a letter of support to send to Maryland Department of Transportation in their, to support their efforts for a bridge investment program planning and environmental linkage study grant through the Federal Highway Department. And so that opportunity would be a collaboration between State of Maryland and West Virginia to not only look at replacing the bridge, but to consider improvements that would enhance the access to town as well as the recreational amenities there with the rail trail and the CNO canal.
Motion?
Are you, motion or consensus?
I think it's just consensus.
Just consensus for a letter of support.
Okay. Fine. Okay.
For the CNO canal, what was the other trail?
The Western Maryland Rail Trail. So this would be the US 522 Bridge crossing.
Better access into town.
Correct. So right now, if you're familiar, and the town mentioned this in their comments when we had the joint meeting with them, there's very difficult access, narrow roadway cross-section and so they're looking to enhance the access into town as well as the amenities they have.
Andrew, do you have any idea when that bridge was built? 522 Bridge?
Ooh.
Sorry.
I know they mentioned it. I want to say it's going on at least 70 years. So a lot of these, they get in that cycle of, you know, do you just do, you know, cleaning, painting, or do you try to replace the structure?
Yeah.
So that's where they're at. And again, the challenge, they're looking at more, if it was just a maintenance level repair, they wouldn't be going through this effort. So this is essentially the opportunity to do some additional planning work to look at those enhancements. And really the linkage nodes that they're looking at, West Virginia, and there's actually two bridges that would need to be considered just to get that connection all the way really up to the, I believe it's the 68 interchange there in town.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Consensus?
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Gordon, county administrator.
Thank you. Had a meeting in the last week with Mako officials. Some of the topics that we discussed surrounded our upcoming 2026 legislative session. Additionally, we focused very heavily on Maryland's fiscal state, which included potential for additional cost shifting related to blueprints, more cuts expected, and potentially unfunded mandates coming related to energy and things like that. We did meet last night with our Maryland Municipal League and our municipal partners here in Washington County. I also participated in the United Way Day of Caring. I'd like to thank all of our employees who participated as well as United Way for coordinating this annual event. I'd like to commend and recognize one of our employees, Alex Reed in Water Quality, who is our watershed specialist. He went above and beyond when he happened upon a motorcycle accident recently last week. He assisted with the severely injured cyclist, potentially saving his life, and it's pretty incredible. So I'd like to recognize him and tell him thank you for a job well done. Have one last thing. I have a letter of support for the town of Keattiesville. I'm looking for a consensus. They are seeking ARC grant funding for their waterline construction project. They are not asking for funds from the county at this time. This proposed project will replace the aging eight-inch main that was installed in 1972 and it will create a new connection to the Keattiesville 12-inch main on Main Street. This loop system will directly serve 37 households in the Bedrock and Kaufman Farms area and equally important, will enhance the resilience and functionality of the shared Boonsborough-Keadiesville water system as a whole.
I support.
Consensus?
Okay.
I think we have it.
That's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is public hearing number one.
No, we can't.
Sorry.
We'll have to take a break until 9:30.
Okay. 9:30. Okay. Do we want to move into any other, we're not ready to do the proclamations or anything?
No, we'll just take a break until 10:30.
Okay. Take a recess until 10:30.
And we'll.
Or 9:30, excuse me.
9:30.
To start the public hearing on time.
And clear the room?
Yep. We'll clear the room.
Okay.
Till 9:30.[1208.83]
Till nine thirty.
Next up is Sean Porter.
I thought as long and as hard as I possibly can, given my two inches of manhood about this issue. And I don't believe that the state should tell anyone what to do with their property. I don't believe in zoning laws. I believe we should be able to put insane asylums in Clear Spring next to politicians' homes if we want to. I believe this country was founded on freedom. I don't believe a bunch of bureaucratic, child-molesting assholes should be able to dictate what you do with your land. Quite frankly, if I want to put a plus-size nudist colony on my property, I should be able to do so. I should have no restrictions. George Washington founded this country. He fought the British, he slit their throats, he killed those motherfuckers. And he didn't do it so some low-level bureaucrats in Annapolis or Washington County who like to touch children could tell you what to do with your land. We're in Washington County, it's named after President George Washington, he was a great general. I don't believe that he is being honored by the cowardly manner in which this county is being run, and the state, of course, Annapolis. I could go on forever about that, but there's not shit I can do about that. I can obviously come in here and harass the living crap out of you corrupt sons of bitches. But, long story short, I don't believe we should pass any more laws. We are supposed to be a free people. And every single time I turn around, you motherfuckers are trying to regulate what I do. John Barr's trying to keep me from pulling my pants down. It's unacceptable that you would pass this ordinance, so I'm against this ordinance completely. I don't believe that you guys should have any more control than you already do. And you just keep passing ordinances and laws and trying to give yourself more power and steal it from the people. I say power to the people! We need to keep this sort of nonsense where government gets involved in what we do with our rental properties, our properties that we reside in. It just, the intrusion never seems to stop. I'm not saying I'm an anarchist, I just believe in property rights. I believe in a free people, I believe in a more perfect union. And I don't believe that passing more laws is the answer. I don't believe that adopting laws that mirror Annapolis, which is what I believe this is, is a good idea. Because if you take a look at Annapolis, it's a giant shit-hole full of corrupt politicians who are trying to steal all our money, they're trying to tell our schools what to do, they're trying to push the trans agenda on us so that we all get murdered in a mass shooting. God rest Charlie Kirk's soul. And again, I don't support this ordinance, I don't support you guys passing any laws, rules. I mean, look what you did with the rules of decorum, you guys couldn't do anything right if you tried. The only thing I've seen you guys do right is John Barr got rid of that stupid fucking bowtie. Have a great day and thank you.
Next up is Justin Holder.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Jill Baker, I'm the Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning. I have with me Kyla Singleton, she is our Comprehensive Planner, and I'm going to turn it over to her for introduction.
Hello. So, the purpose of this amendment is to match the language adopted by the General Assembly, which preempts local zoning authority. This is to ensure that we are not misleading the public with where they can legally go or give the public the impression the county has any authority on the location of these facilities. We are bringing forward the Bills 1109 from the 2015 General Session and 857 from the 2017 General Session together as they share similar zoning preemption language. Both Bills define zoning towards both the small and large facilities. A small halfway house, max size is eight, and the max size for large halfway houses are sixteen. The max small size for group homes is nine, and the max large size for group homes is sixteen. While the state does preempt where the facilities can be located, the county will still require a zoning permit for these facilities. New state-given definitions will be added for halfway houses and group homes. Staff needs to note, the definitions of group homes was intended to exclude minor foster care homes, and the definition of halfway houses was intended to exclude women's shelters. The full definitions are included in the staff report but accidentally left out of the track changes version of the amendment. To reflect the new language, our current language for transitional or sheltered care homes will have to be removed. State law requires small halfway houses and group homes to be permitted where single-family dwellings are permitted. State law requires large halfway homes and large group homes to be permitted in multifamily districts. The Planning Commission recommended large also be permitted in the rural areas. The proposed amendments were reviewed by the Planning Commission at the Public Information Meeting on April 7th, and at their regular meeting on May 5th, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this amendment. The minutes and agenda are in your package.
That was included in the staff report.
With that, conclusion of the staff report, we will now open the hearing for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment, if you have a sign-up list? Thank you. I can't read. Is it Curtis Ray?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Ray?
Hello, I'm Curtis Ray, I'm running for County Commissioner for 2026. I live in Hagerstown, I'll bring back public comment, fix our bond issue, solve the homeless crisis, and accountability for our politicians. Now, let's get into the speech. We should actually make all of these houses require special permits, and the reason for it is because these homes usually house very mentally ill people. And they are always running away from these facilities into the neighborhoods wherever they are put. And a lot of these people require around-the-clock care usually, but the facilities are not required to be legally responsible for them. So example, they bring some extremely mentally ill individuals to your neighborhood, imagine me letting the county commissioners loose in your neighborhood, they start trespassing and breaking into your houses, and the facility that brought them there that is supposed to house them is not responsible for them. And these laws do nothing but protect the facilities and allow them to pop up wherever someone pleases, and your HOA has no authority over it. So if you think you're safe, you ain't. I could buy a house in your HOA and make it a mental health facility, and the zoning board can't do anything about it. Because technically, I can just make it a single-family home and house eight people there that are extremely unwell, and that they are not required to be kept there. That's the problem. And the reason I know this is because this actually happened on my street. And we dealt with an individual for nine months. He ran around, breaking into people's houses. He only broke into houses where they didn't have a gun, lucky for him. And these individuals, they run amok. They made it that my neighborhood, there was no women jogging, no children playing outside, and it didn't get handled until we all came together to handle it, which I'm happy we did. So I say again, we need to make it that these houses require permits at all times and that they can be revoked if the establishment is not taking responsibility for the people that they are supposed to be housing. And remember, Curtis Ray for County Commissioner, 2026, Araya Hope.
Next up is Sean Porter.
I thought as long and as hard as I possibly can, given my two inches of manhood, about this issue. And I don't believe that the state should tell anyone what to do with their property. I don't believe in zoning laws. I believe we should be able to put insane asylums in Clear Spring next to politicians' homes if we want to. I believe this country was founded on freedom. I don't believe a bunch of bureaucratic, child-molesting assholes should be able to dictate what you do with your land. Quite frankly, if I want to put a plus-size nudist colony on my property, I should be able to do so. I should have no restrictions. George Washington founded this country. He fought the British, he slit their throats, he killed those motherfuckers. And he didn't do it so some low-level bureaucrats in Annapolis or Washington County who like to touch children could tell you what to do with your land. We're in Washington County, it's named after President George Washington, he was a great general. I don't believe that he is being honored by the cowardly manner in which this county is being run, and the state, of course, Annapolis. I could go on forever about that, but there's not shit I can do about that. I can obviously come in here and harass the living crap out of you corrupt sons of bitches. But, long story short, I don't believe we should pass any more laws. We are supposed to be a free people. And every single time I turn around, you motherfuckers are trying to regulate what I do. John Barr's trying to keep me from pulling my pants down. It's unacceptable that you would pass this ordinance, so I'm against this ordinance completely. I don't believe that you guys should have any more control than you already do. And you just keep passing ordinances and laws and trying to give yourself more power and steal it from the people. I say power to the people! We need to keep this sort of nonsense where government gets involved in what we do with our rental properties, our properties that we reside in. It just, the intrusion never seems to stop. I'm not saying I'm an anarchist, I just believe in property rights. I believe in a free people, I believe in a more perfect union. And I don't believe that passing more laws is the answer. I don't believe that in adopting laws that mirror Annapolis, which is what I believe this is, is a good idea. Because if you take a look at Annapolis, it's a giant shit-hole full of corrupt politicians who are trying to steal all our money, they're trying to tell our schools what to do, they're trying to push the trans agenda on us so that we all get murdered in a mass shooting. God rest Charlie Kirk's soul. And again, I don't support this ordinance, I don't support you guys passing any laws, rules. I mean, look what you did with the rules of decorum, you guys couldn't do anything right if you tried. The only thing I've seen you guys do right is John Barr got rid of that stupid fucking bowtie. Have a great day and thank you.
Next up is Justin Holder.
Good morning Commissioners. I've read the text amendment for the group homes, and it's a little bit confusing as Mr. Porter and Mr. Ray have two opposing views. But it looks like you guys are just making it clear that they're completely unregulated at all. You guys have no authority to regulate the group homes under Maryland law. And I've been, you know, I think it's a great start, but I think you should make more clear that there's just no regulation at all for these group homes. They're important to society. People go through all kinds of struggles in their life, doesn't mean they're bad people. Some people don't react well to certain types of care. And having a place where, you know, for example, I spent three years of my life in prison when I was a kid, and I was able to help a lot of people in that prison. Some of them I didn't, some of them they're probably still out killing people. But I'd like to do this in Keattiesville at my campground, and I've been fighting with the town of Keattiesville. And I know Curtis says, you know, hey, they're going to get out, they're going to run loose on the streets of Keattiesville. I think, I don't think they will. I think that, you know, you've just got to give these people an opportunity, bring them into the town, and just sort of let them go. And, you know, they need to re-acclimate themselves with society in a way that works for them. And a lot of times governmental programs are too structured for certain people. People don't like to be institutionalized, they like to have their freedom. And to bring them into an area in Keattiesville at my campground where I can give them freedom, you know, I'd like to get into some Native American weaponry and teach them primitive skills and hunting and things like that in the town. And I think that this ordinance is good. I just would like to see you guys go farther to just really reiterate that it's completely unregulated, that these group homes, that they're just completely lawless. And that this is the structure we need, I think, to, you know, really bring out people's qualities in society where, you know, they're just in that niche, they're just, nobody gets them, nobody really understands these people. Everybody thinks they're weird. These aren't weird people. They're just expressing themselves in a different way.
unstable or is going through a, a drug crisis or an epidemic. I think that the text amendments do not actually go, do not go far enough, and they're actually incomplete as of now. I think we need to further amend the text for the halfway houses to also include rooms and facilities for the Washington County Board of County Commissioners when they decide to go off on tangents and do things that are clearly would be outside of somebody's mind to do, like filing peace orders against somebody for free speech and filing lawsuits that are in opposition to the First Amendment. Honestly, I think that you would need to check yourself into a halfway house to hire attorney Sarah Spatonic. But in any event, like I said, the text amendments do not go far enough. I am in opposition. And the bottom line is that I would say that anybody inside a halfway house is not nearly as mentally far gone as most of the individuals who sit on this dais right before me. So like I said, the bottom line is we need to further elaborate in the amendments, a section where we can actually provide housing, provide room for the Washington County Board of County Commissioners. I've also heard a lot of rumors that there might be, there might be some alcoholism issues from particular, from a particular Washington County Board of County Commissioners.
You're done. You're finished, Mr. Trumbull. You're, you're way off.
Am I off?
You're way off the subject matter here. I'm sorry. Please, you're done.
Am I done?
Yes, thank you.
But I was, I thought I was on topic. I was talking about the, the amendments that I were.
You're out of order. I'm sorry. Just please, please take a seat.
I can't.
At this point, this concludes the public comment portion of the hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Yes, yes.
Jill. Are there things that we can limit? For example, can we limit the number of halfway houses on a block or in a geographic area? Or any other way to limit the number in, you know, a community, for example? Because I don't think it precludes that. When it looks skimming the legislation, I didn't think it precluded us taking an action like that. We can't keep them out of an area, but we, I didn't see where it said we could not limit the number in a specific area.
So the law only says that we must allow them in the districts where single-family homes are permitted, and that we can't pass regulations, put special conditions or anything like that, that would be more or above and beyond what we do for single-family homes. So the way I read that is that single-family homes are permitted on any property in that zoning district, and therefore we would have to treat group homes and halfway houses the same way. We wouldn't be able to limit them.
We are treating it the same way, in my view. If you limit it, a halfway house can go on this, on this block, but you can limit it in that area. I'd be willing to try and test that. Just something I want to throw out there, because I think there are potentially, you know, options here. Another question I have is, are there, is there any ability to require any standard, you know, like, if you have eight people at home or 16, how many cars are there going to be allowed there? How about for security? How about for some sort of supervisory presence? What are the standards? Because the range of group homes and who the clientele are there could be very broad in terms of needing some care or supervisory ability to monitor behavior.
So from the question about parking, the answer is, you know, no, we wouldn't regulate the parking any more than we would for a single-family home that has six children and two parents. So we wouldn't limit the number of parking spaces because it's not considered a commercial use. It's considered a residential use. And we do not put limitations on residential uses other than we require a minimum of two spaces. So, so we would not apply additional parking spaces to those types of uses. With regard to the supervisory, that is not a zoning question. That is a behavioral health question. That is monitored by the Behavioral Health Administration as part of the Board of Health, Department of Health. We have no way, we have no resources to be able to monitor or provide supervision or make sure there's supervision. That's all to be handled as part of the license.
That's a zoning issue. So how do we, as county government, we look at that as an issue that might be able to mitigate some of the concerns that are brought up today and maybe from other citizens? How do we then work to mitigate that aspect?
What do you believe to be a zoning issue?
If that's not a zoning issue.
Yeah.
How do we then work to mitigate it? What staff collaboration have we done to raise, you know, the opportunity to maybe address a concern about potential problems of behavior of people? Because that's where it is focused, I think.
So again, we don't have county resources to do that. That is all legislated and enforced by the state. Now, I, I, maybe a conversation could be held with our local health department to see what their involvement in this type of thing would be. But again, I'm sorry, that's, that's just, that's a social issue, not a zoning issue.
So we'll need to look at addressing it with county health department, is what you're saying, or through addressing it with our delegation for some sort of a amendment to legislation to put some type of conditions on this.
Yes.
Okay, so, next question. I have five total questions here, so bear with me. Impact on homeowner associations or on already, already established deed restrictions? Can you comment on that?
Yes. So homeowners' associations and deed restrictions and covenants generally fall into the same category of private contracts between an entity outside of a local government and the property owner. The state law doesn't say anything about HOAs having to allow these. They remain silent on the issue. So from our perspective, this is just like any other zoning regulation, where the county says, from a zoning perspective, if somebody would come in and request a zoning certification, we would say, yes, we have to give you the zoning certification. However, if it violates your HOA covenants or deed restrictions, the property owners and/or organization that monitors those restrictions can come against you and say, no, you can't do that. They can litigate against it and not permit it within their areas.
So that task then falls upon the HOA to defend it or some other party. Okay.
Yes.
Fourth question is, and I, I wonder about this. Who is responsible for the individuals staying at the halfway home? Who is responsible if there's a violent act, if there's a rape in the neighborhood, if there are hypodermic needles left, okay? If there are gummy bits that are laced with something, and it, you know, who is responsible civilly, liable for that behavior?
I can't answer that.
Was it addressed at all in the discussions when you reviewed the legislation?
It is not addressed in the legislation, though.
Okay. Can, can we have... Okay, it's something that we're going to have to ask staff to pursue understanding, in my view, so we can get clarification about legal responsibility, I think. I think that's going to be a do-out. Are there any standards or conditions at all that we can overlay on this text amendment that we, that you have considered and/or we have not considered that we could put to bound this a little bit more?
The law is pretty clear that we have to, pardon me, we have to treat these as residential uses. We can't require special conditions. We can't require special acceptance. That's just the way the law is written.
Okay. And what happens if we do not vote to approve the amendment? The law still stands, correct?
We will still enforce it as far as the state law says, and it will remain in the zoning ordinance. We believe that that will cause confusion with the public. We've already had that happen, where somebody will call us and say, well, your zoning ordinance says that they're not allowed in this district. And our response is, that's a state law that has preempted us, and there's nothing we can do about it. And the response becomes, then why do you even have it in there?
But we do not have, we do not have to affirm this legislation, correct?
That's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question, Jill. I got a couple quick. I'm going to be a lot simpler than that. So basically, you're telling us it's mandated. Basically, you're telling us that we don't have a choice. I, I don't think there's, at least in my opinion, there's anybody, if the public was all in here, would, would like this at all. I, I just don't think they would. If you took a survey of the whole community, because, you know, I'm not saying there's not a, before, it used to be a special exception. We knew that. So they have to go through and hear the voice of the neighbors and those kind of things. I, I guess it boils down, it's as simple for me. I don't even know why we're sitting here voting on this. I mean, if I would vote, if I'm, I'm a no, but it makes no difference, but that's okay. So I, I just think there's too many questions. Commissioner Harvey brought up a bunch of questions that we don't even have any answers to, and, and you're looking at it as cut and dry. The state said, this is it, but, you know, HOAs have to fight their own, so they do it in a 55 community. People spend all their time trying to find a house in a 55 community. I'm just using it as an example, because I'm old. And, and all of a sudden, now they have, you know, a group home or halfway home beside them. So that's up to the, what I'm hearing, it's up to the HOA or the community covenants and restrictions to fight that. So the people are sort of left out, hanging, left out, hanging to dry, try to hang, whatever. But I guess the purpose is, if, if we just vote no, and I know what you just said, but if, if I'd say I wouldn't affirm that it's, I agree with it. Might not make any difference, but it's going to cause some confusion, so, so, so be it. So that's just the way I'm thinking. I, I just, it's just too, too big. It's too broad. I mean, I like this. The special exception was fine, but now they've taken that right away. So, I don't know. Is that what you're sort of getting at, Derek?
I think this is very broad, and will have a deep, deeper impact with second and third order consequences that we're going to hear about for a long time. There needs to be a way to provide, you know, transitional homes, but I think there needs to be greater care about the selection of those and how they impact a community and property rights for neighbors and for safety and for monitoring. So there's a lot of unanswered questions here. There are some very good points brought up by our speakers, and I've heard from others, too. So I, you know, I, I'm not going to, you know, I, I don't have anything else to say, except that there's too many.
It's, it's very broad. It's very broad, and I, I don't know. I just can't imagine the public would, would like this at all. Of course, again, that's another one of our state mandates, and we're probably going to hear about a couple more, the way it sounds. So, anyway, that's all I had.
Any other discussion?
There's no other discussion, and there's no motions for today. We'd like to close the public hearing and have staff do additional research.
Okay. Everybody fine with that? The public hearing is now concluded. If you have any further discussion, we'll bring it back at a later time. Okay? We get some more details. Very good. Moving to tab number two. Likewise, this is the next item on the agenda as a public hearing concerning a proposed zoning text amendment, RZ 25-003. The purpose of, of this hearing is to hear public testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be open for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. Testimony that is not relevant to the subject matter of the public hearing or that is repetitive, disruptive, disturbing, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the public hearing will not be tolerated. Unauthorized remarks, loud noises, whistles, yells, or similar disruptions from the gallery shall not be permitted. Anyone who fails to follow these rules forfeits their opportunity to testify and will be asked to return to their seat or leave the meeting room, as deemed appropriate by the board. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. There shall be no donating or pooling of time to allow any one person to speak longer than their three minutes. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners may then discuss the issue and provide direction to staff. Would anyone who wishes to testify today, please stand to take the oath?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that the response is given and the statement's made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Okay, at this, at this... At this time, I'd like staff, Kyla Singleton and Jill Baker, to proceed with the issue.
Again, Jill Baker. I'm the director of the Department of Planning and Zoning, and with me is Kyla Singleton. She is the comprehensive planner for our department, and I am going to turn it to her for the introduction. The purpose of this amendment is to add clarification to better define when a non-conforming use ceases to exist. A non-conforming use is legally existing, is legally existing when established, but zoning laws have since changed, making the use no longer conforming. Legal non-conforming uses can continue to operate. They can also be expanded within set limits if approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The current ordinance, zoning ordinance does not explicitly define when or what it means for a use to be abandoned. The proposed language includes an abandonment clause to define when exactly a use has been ceased or has been abandoned. The proposed amendment was reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public information meeting held on April 7. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the text amendment. The minutes and agenda from that meeting are included in your packet, and this concludes the panel.
Anything else, Jill?
No.
Okay. Sign-in sheet. This, this time, we'll take public testimony. First up is Curtis Ray.
My name is Curtis Ray. I live in Hagerstown. I will say this. I do have great disdain for you guys. However, I am actually quite happy that we are talking about this, and I'm actually glad you brought up a lot of your questions, Harvey. This matter is actually one of the biggest ones that got me into politics. We had this Help Home. We have two on our street, which, within half a mile of each other, which is odd. One did phenomenal. Love them to death. They're the Ark. Love the Ark. The other one, there's another one. I can't say their name, but these individuals used to house only people that were paralyzed, tend to have issues of that caliber. But then they started branching out to more behavioral housed individuals that were able-bodied, just not of sound mind. These individuals, they are not restricted under the facility. mind. These individuals, they are not restricted under the facilities. I spoke to great lengths with these people, to the facility owners, and they stated that they have no legal ability of-
The public comment period's closed.
What, what are we discussing?
Mr. Ray, you're, you're off subject here. Has nothing to do with the public hearing that we're having?
This is about the zoning ordinance. I, I came at you with an olive branch. Why are you making it so difficult to speak to you guys? I, I, I came at you with an olive branch. I tried to say what you all are doing is good. I'm glad you all are asking these questions. And I believe that we should come up with a solution to try and rectify this. I know that Comar won't allow you. I know it's issued by the state of Maryland. But this is the thing. We could probably try and do like a rental permit thing, where we start issuing rental permits to single-family homes.
That was the previous text amendment. This text amendment has nothing to do with that.
Do you have any comments regarding the nonconforming use changes?
I guess the nonconforming use is that we should allow it. I don't even know what that is. All I know is that I'm talking about the amendment to the zoning application, which is basically saying that the housing is allowed to basically flop up anywhere at once, and there's nothing you all can do about it, because the state of Maryland is crushing down on you. And I know you all are obviously trying to crush me out right now, but it's aggravating.
You're, you're referring to the previous public hearing, so I'm gonna ask you to cease, please.
Look-
You're all, you're off subject.
You all bring up Charlie Kirk, but then you don't want to-
Okay.
Next up is Sean Porter.
Why are you, I'm trying to be so cordial with you. I still have 79 seconds. So I would like to have my 79 seconds to discuss what I believe is pertinent to this.
Mr. Ray, I'm gonna ask you, please sit down. As a presiding officer in this meeting, I'm asking you to please sit down.
Look, I had 79 seconds.
No, you don't. I, I-
You want to pass me, that's on you.
Officer, I need, I need Mr. Ray to either sit down or leave the chambers.
All righty, we're talking about nonconforming use. Basically, we're talking about ex post facto laws. That means if you own a property, and some idiots get elected, child molesters, accused child molesters, drunk drivers, whatever. These idiots come in, dressed up in their clown suits, with their bow ties and whatnot, and giant red noses, and pass ordinances and laws that preclude certain uses that were previously approved and are grandfathered in. Basically, this makes it so the government can't come in and change the use of your property once you're already using it. Basically, if you live on a farm, and it smells like horse shit, just like y'all's breath, the subdivision that gets built right next to your farm can't come in and say, oh, you know, we need to pass a zoning change, and farms aren't allowed, and, and then retroactively, ex post facto, change that farm into residential use only, and put the farm out of business. That's basically what they're doing here. So I would support you guys not telling people what to do with their property, because, I mean, Waco, Texas comes to mind. The government likes to tell people what to do, how many guns they can own. Janet Reno, you know, all these sort of situations are easily preventable by you guys minding your own fucking business, which I know is hard to do. So if you have a property, and it's zoned to be able to do something, and you guys come in and say, no, you can no longer do that here. You can't do that because you're grandfathered in. They can't ex post facto law you. They can't, you know, change the law after the fact and make you change your behavior on your land. Basically, there's a lot of people in Washington County. Terry Porter comes to mind. Basically, you can't tell people in Washington County what to do with their land, or you have a serious issue with those individuals. They'll fight till their last breath, like, God bless Terry Porter. Great man. Anyone with the last name of Porter is clearly genius. But anyway, if you were to try to retroactively change the uses of land for like, people like me, or Justin Holder, you could suck what's on this paper right here. This is just my opinion of you guys, and what you could suck if you were to try to retroactively change the use of any land that I'm in care, control, or custody thereof. Anyhow, again, Charlie Kirk, that was a horrible thing. I'd like to thank Derek Harvey for standing up and realizing that you don't have to just rubber stamp anything that comes from Annapolis. You can just simply not, you know, sign off on these different ordinances like you were gonna do earlier with the previous one. You can just tell Annapolis to fuck off, just like I tell John Barr to fuck off all the time. So anyway, I'm gonna yield back the balance of my time. But again, if you change the use of any property I'm in the care, control, and custody of, this is what you can suck. It's a nice giant life-size picture of my 12-inch, 12-inch man hood, slightly exaggerated by about 600%. But anyway, have a great day.
Next up is Justin, Justin Holder.
Morning, again, Commissioners, County Attorney, Administrator. This ordinance, just to, just to make the record clear, I am a taxpayer in Washington County. You guys are gonna increase taxes tremendously when you pass this. A nonconforming use, in my opinion of the law, it's, it's an, it's an pertinent right to people's property. The case of Worthington versus Lee in 1871, when a grantor gives, gives everything he owns. And he gives the pertinent rights, which might be tacking of adverse possession, any, any, you know, prescriptive easements, any, any type of things he's acquired through adverse possession of stop, or anything in law and equity. And he gives everything to the next owner. And in modern-day time, people own properties in, you know, many different complex strategies, you know, land trusts, LLCs. Sometimes they just transfer membership in LLCs. But all these property rights, they're bundled up. And you guys want to regulate something, that the case of Khan versus Khan, said it was a jury trial before the common law. We've adopted all the English common law. And as a taxpayer, I'm concerned that the county's just gonna get itself sued, again. And these lawsuits are expensive to us as taxpayers. You know, it's clear from the last public hearing, and, you know, I appreciate Randy and Derek's idea, but they can't do anything. When a state law totally dominates a space, you're helpless. And you're gonna get a DJ and an injunction if you don't pass the ordinance, and you're gonna end up spending however much money on legal fees, when you know, it's clear, you guys know you gotta pass it, you gotta broaden that text up. And you're gonna do it here again. You can't regulate and decide abandonment happened in six months. You can't do that. That's a jury question. That means everybody goes to court, and they decide by a jury, was there an overt act that everybody could see, object manifestation to the world, that they wanted to abandon this use? In my campground in Keydiesville, I don't want to abandon that. But the way I've been treated in Keydiesville, it's hard, it's hard to keep it open. I mean, the sewer's polluting the creek, and you guys won't even change the comprehensive plan. It's polluting the well. They're drinking poop in Boonsborough in Keydiesville. And I don't think that use is conforming. But I don't think I've abandoned the use to dump sewer in the creek. I think I can do it. I think I have every right to do it. And the EPA, MDE, nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna stop me. There's not one person that's gonna stop me from doing it, because nobody has a set of balls to do it in here, okay?
Okay. Next up is Levi.
Yes, good morning. I appreciate having my time stolen the last time. So, in any event, I am also not for the government trying to forcibly change anybody's zoning use. If we want to talk about a nonconforming use, I think we really need to talk about the nonconforming use of this building. This building is owned by the people, the taxpayers, the people who, you know, own property, who live in Washington County. And the people who sit up on this dais do not conform to the use of this building, which is, should be honoring the First Amendment, honoring people's rights, but instead, we don't do that very much up here. So, in any event, I want to talk about the fact that Justin Holder, you know, his property rights have been violated. Time and time again, you're trying to say that he isn't conforming with the use of his property. It's absolutely ridiculous. And that's why Washington County government is currently under the long legal arm of the amazing Justin Holder. But in any event, with the whole nonconforming use, listen, I think there was some text in there talking about that a property would need to cease and desist within six months if they were found to be nonconforming. It sort of reminds me of the six-month ban, the cease and desist that was unlawful that you put on Mr. Porter. There was definitely some text in there somewhere that talked about all of that. But the bottom line is, and I don't even think that I'll get my full 180 seconds in, because I didn't have the wonderful opportunity to look through all of the text amendments. But the bottom line is, you should not be trying to dictate what people should be able to do on their property. And what you should do instead is look inwards and say to yourselves, rather than trying to control what you can control, control what you can control, and make this building for the people, run by the people, allow free speech. And with that, I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you. With that, this concludes the public comment portion of the hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for staff?
I'll, I guess I'll start. When I read this, and I read the redactions and everything, I'm trying to understand, what is the problem that we are actually trying to address with this amendment?
Currently, we don't have any explicit language within our ordinance that defines when a use either ceases or is abandoned. That is what we're seeking to resolve here. Nonconforming uses are just that. They're nonconforming. They are allowed to continue for as long as they want to continue. They may also expand within certain limits when approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we're not trying to quash those rights. What we're trying to do is determine at what point in time that use ceases to exist, or is abandoned by the property owner, so that the zoning, or the use, I should say, of the property will then become conforming again.
So what is, that's a nice explanation of what you're doing, but what is the problem that we're trying to address? Has there been an issue or a problem with, say, someone investing in a property near an interstate or something, or someplace else, you know, and it's nonconforming, whether it's a junkyard or something else, and they never activated that as a junkyard, but they have the intent of it down the road, or there's an inherent value because of the zoning that allows it to be developed in a nonconforming way? Why, why do we need to put a time limit on now? What has changed that makes this a problem that we specifically need to address? That's what I, I'm grappling with here. What are we, what are we fixing that is already broken?
The six months exist today. We're not adding that. We're not changing that. Six months exists today. The purpose of when we change zoning, and we have nonconforming uses, is when situations occur that there have been changes within that neighborhood that, that provide a different type of need for a certain type of use. So there have been examples of where we've had nonconforming uses that, in our opinion, have ceased to exist. Either they have not been actively advertising, they have demolished the structure, they basically have abandoned that type of use on that property for over six months, and therefore, the use cannot continue that way. It must now become conforming. So-
Isn't six months a remarkably short amount of time in terms of property management, investment portfolio, strategic planning about your assets?
So let me be clear about the fact that we are talking about the difference between subjective and tangible proof. If somebody says to me, yeah, I always meant for that use to continue, prove to me that that was your intent. Either it's been actively for sale, you've got documentation from your broker saying, look, we've been, you know, analyzing the heck out of this, trying to figure what the next thing can be. If you prove something to us about, that's another example. Yeah, we've had one case where they've proven to us that I, even though the sale of liquor ceased for six months, they maintained their liquor license, proving their intent to maintain that use. So that's all we're asking for, is a way that they can provide tangible proof. Not just sit there and say, let something rot away to nothing, and then say, well, I've always intended to reopen that. That, that's subjective to us. We're simply putting language into the ordinance to say that that proof must be tangible.
This is not related at all to some, it has to be something that was already ongoing, from what you're telling me-
Correct.
And they stopped doing it.
Correct.
So they were actually doing, they were, they were actually a bar, or they were actually, you know, some other type of business, and they ceased doing it. They shut it down completely.
Yes.
And it's, it's not going to impact at all anybody who purchases an investment property with a nonconforming capability on, you know, with the title.
Yeah. So to use that same example, if, if you own a bar, and you decide, I don't want to do this anymore, and you close the bar, and you put it up for sale, there is a tangible intent from you, by putting that up for sale, that you intend for that use to continue, maybe just not under your name. So the person that purchases that, that from you, they then take over that nonconforming use. It converts over to them, and the use continues. It's just a matter of when that, that use ceases to exist. That's what we're discussing.
Jill, would this be a good example? Say, I had a country store, and been in my name for 50 years. We've been operating for 50 years. It wouldn't be allowed under today's current things, and we decide, nobody wants to run the country store. We get rid of it, but it's still our property. So in seven months, or six months, you could say, you no longer can open another country store there for somebody to come in and buy it. Is that correct?
Unless they have tangible proof that says it's fully, it was always fully our intent to maintain that country store.
But then you devalue their property at that point? Did you not devalue their property at that point?
They devalued their property by closing the business.
Well, but that's a business, excuse me, that's a business decision that may take a year or two to figure out your options, to then sell it to Sheets, for example.
And again, you would have tangible proof showing that you were working toward that.
So what's the level of proof? I, as a property owner, just need to provide you a written certified statement saying, I'm considering all my options to leverage this property under its current use?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm given protection for how long?
As long as you continue pursuing that.
What's the threshold of evidence for me to convince the, the government that I am pursuing it? Just a statement, certified letter?
So I would want a letter, and then I would want some sort of statement from whoever you're working with, that, yeah, we're working on this together, whether it be a business partner, or whatever, that, yeah, we're working on moving this forward. We're working with this architect. We're working with this real estate agent. We're working with this broker, whatever, to move this forward. And, and, yeah, we understand that.
Let's say the owner died, and it's now in, in probate and everything else. That could take three or four years.
Probate is another reason. We would extend that. We would say, yeah, that, you know, if, if you're in probate, if, if there's an estate problem-
What guarantee does the owner have that it would be extended?
It's the tangible proof section. They can also come, and if they, if they want, what we can do, and we have done in the past, is they can present that information to us. As the zoning administrator, I present a letter back saying, we acknowledge that this issue is going on, that the nonconforming use will continue until such time you cease to do-
What's the, what's the public interest in ending the nonconforming use?
Because nonconforming uses tend to happen in areas that have developed a different way, and now don't have the, they have a different impact to the neighborhood than it had before, and it may not be a conducive impact.
I guess what scares me a little bit on this, Jill, and I don't, is that you said in my opinion, okay, we understand your intent, your, I- in my opinion, okay, we understand your intent, your, I'm from working with you, I know you go the extra mile to make things fair, but what happens if the next director doesn't go the extra mile to make things fair and say, "You're caught all six months, we don't care"?
There is an appeal process.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Who does the appeal process go to?
It would first go to the Board of Zoning Appeals as an administrative error.
Anything else? Okay. Public hearing is now concluded. I guess we'll take this under advisement. Further discussion at a later date. Is that your pleasure?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, very good. Next item under tab three is another public hearing. This is a public hearing concerning the proposed zoning text amendment, RZ 25-004. Purpose of this hearing is to hear public comment, testimony concerning the matter. The procedure is as follows. We will first have staff introduce the matter, after which the hearing will be opened for public comment and testimony. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to testify. Testimony that is not relevant to the subject matter of the public hearing, or that is repetitive, disruptive, disturbing, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the public hearing will not be tolerated. Unauthorized remarks, loud noises, whistles, yells, or similar disruptions from the gallery shall not be permitted. Anyone who fails to follow these rules forfeits their opportunity to testify and will be asked to return to their seat or leave the meeting room as deemed appropriate by the board. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. There shall be no donating or pouring of time to allow for any one person to speak longer than their three minutes. After everyone who wishes to speak has done so, the hearing will close. The commissioners may then discuss the issue and provide direction to staff. So anyone wishing to testify today, please stand to take the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that the responses given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, at this time, I'd like Jill Baker and Kyla Singleton to, comprehensive planner Department of Planning and Zoning, will introduce the matter.
Yeah, one more time. Jill Baker, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning, and I have with me Kyla Singleton, who is our comprehensive planner and will introduce the question.
So the purpose of this amendment for manufactured homes in modular dwellings is to match the language from Bill 538 from the 2024 session, adopted by the General Assembly, which preempts local zoning. This is to ensure we are not misleading the public with where they can legally go or give the public the impression the county has any authority over the location of these dwellings. Manufactured homes, previously known as mobile homes, in modular dwellings are required to be permitted where family dwelling, single-family dwellings are permitted. To reflect the new terminology, mobile homes will be replaced from manufactured homes throughout the ordinance. A new definition will be added using the definition provided by the state. Manufactured homes will be permitted as uses everywhere that single-family dwellings are permitted. Modular dwellings will be given a new definition only because, only as they are also, they are already permitted in the ordinance as a type of single-family home. The proposed amendment was reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public information meeting held on April 7. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this text amendment. The minutes and agenda are included in your file, and this concludes the report.
Okay, Jill, you have anything? Okay. You need to do the oath.
You already did.
Okay. Now, open the hearing for public comment. And first up is Mr. Ray.
My name is Curtis Ray, and I live in Hagerstown. I have always been a good noodle. I have had no criminal records whatsoever, and it isn't until you guys trespass me that I had a criminal record. I didn't even have a speeding ticket. I'm 27 years old. My dad was a prolific criminal, and I made it my vow in life to not be a criminal. And everything that you all have done is just make me out to be this malicious individual that has done nothing but try and help the very county I wish to serve. It is aggravating, everything that you all are doing, and all you're doing is trying to stifle free speech. You all get commissioner comment, take that away. You guys get staff comment, take that away.
Mr. Ray?
I have 128 seconds.
No, you do not.
I do.
Mr. Ray, you're...
I am...
Let me read, let me read again.
Go ahead, speak.
Disruptive, out of context, repetitive. Should I keep going?
You do whatever you want. All I know is I got 128 seconds.
You do not.
I wish to speak. It is aggravating how all of these commissioners allow you to keep...
Mr. Ray?
...do what you will. And we, as leaders, need to stand up for people like you.
Mr. Ray, I'm asking you to stop.
...to go against the evil in which is prevailing.
We are having a public... Mr. Ray?
...to act are nothing but cohorts of evil individuals.
Deputy, I need him to sit down, please.
That's what it is. You don't have to do this.
Mr. Ray, we are having a public hearing.
I don't want to. I have 128 seconds.
No, you do not. Turn the clock off.
Clock's already off. It's at 128.
Okay, next up is Justin Holder.
And all you do is keep calling other people to stifle the other speakers. That's what you do. Why, why do you go so heavily against free speech?
Mr. Holder, please.
And I believe I have the right to finish my speech.
No, you do not.
Under your context, I might not, but I believe as an American, I do.
I'm the presiding officer. I'm asking you one more time to please sit down and/or leave the room.
You can be the presiding officer or whatever you deem to be.
Officer, I'm going to clear the room. Recession, I'm sorry, folks, clear the room till I get order in these chambers.
My understanding, Justin Holder is up. Justin?
Before we continue.
Justin Holder is up. I'm asking you to, Curtis go sit, take a seat. Justin, Justin Holder is up.
Before we continue.
Please, Ju- Justin Holder is up. I'm asking you to sit down, please. Justin Holder is up.
I'm, I'm asking.
No. I'm the chairman presiding over this meeting right now. I'm calling Justin Holder up to speak. I'm asking you to sit down.
Is John Barr okay?
I'm asking you to sit down. Deputy, I'm asking Mr. Ray to sit down.
I do not want to sit down. Respectfully.
I'm asking to sit down, or we'll go back into recess again.
I'm asking, is John Barr okay? So we're not the deputy removing from the meeting.
Okay. Are you willing to sit down so we can continue?
Uh, I would like to continue my subject.
No, I'm asking you to sit down, or the deputy will remove you from the meeting room. Deputy?
You're sitting down. Then it has to sit with the leader. We, we, I will leave, but not electively. I'm being forced to.
That's right.
Will you sign that right there? Right under? Under your, your. Thank you. Justin, you're up now. Thank you, sir.
All right.
And this is for RZ 004.
Yeah, 004, the manufactured home tax with the state law change in the real property code. Yeah. Thank you, guys, again this morning. And I want to discuss this ordinance, but I have to discuss it in the context of sort of what's transpired as a taxpayer. Again, I pay property taxes in this county. A lot of taxes are going to litigation. Litigation about stuff that you guys can solve. And, and what's clear to me now, and it just became clear, there's, there's a major disconnect between Ms. Baker and our county attorney and, and your guys' as commissioners. Ms. Baker clearly is not competent in the law. In the last ordinance, she's trying to shift the burden to prove a negative on abandonment, okay? That's not how you prove abandonment. The person that's trying to prove the abandonment, it's their burden of proof. She's shifting the burden of proof to the homeowners.
Can you just try to keep?
I, I am, just let me get there.
Can you shift back to the Foreign Center comments against Jill, okay?
I'm, I'm not.
I know, I thank you for your patience.
She's not a, she's not a lawyer, but Mr. Kiefer's there, and she can ask Mr. Kiefer, and he knows that the proof of abandonment.
But I'm gonna ask you to stay on topic before.
Because this is how these things are increasing our taxes, Mr. Klein. Just let me, just give, just give me a little leeway.
I'm trying to be patient with him.
All right, I appreciate that. So, in, in, in the first one, you guys clearly know that you have to pass the ordinance. But you, Mr. Harvey and Mr. Wagner were just, well, what are we gonna do? We're, we're gonna thumb our nose at the state law. That's not what you do. Go file a lawsuit in court, grow a set of balls, and, and go challenge it with a DJ and injunction. I just did it. I got a Judge Nicholas that doesn't even have a set of balls to declare the rights and status. All he has to do is say it's okay for the state, if they don't like the way we talk, to take away our rights. I don't even have a Circuit Court judge over there that'll do that in Judge Nicholas. He took the cowardly way out, and he just dismissed it, so it has to go to Annapolis and then come back. We need, in government, to stand up when the state creates a law in these manufactured homes. What you're gonna have is people shipping in tiny homes from China, okay? Dropping one property everywhere. That's what this is gonna create. This is stuff coming out of Annapolis. You guys don't have any choice, but to pass this, you're adopting the legal standards the state provided to you. But you gotta pass it, or we go to court, we file a declaratory judgment, and we enjoin the state from this unconstitutional law. And that's how we have to handle these. Otherwise, it's just gonna cost us more money as taxpayers when we do this stuff. So we need these people to talk here a little bit more, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Levi Trumble, you're up next.
Good morning. My name is Levi Trumble. I know that previously today I have spoken in my personal capacity, but as of about five minutes ago, I am on assignment from the Circuit Court for Washington County, Maryland. I'm actually here to serve the counter lawsuit onto Mr. Zachary Kiefer as it relates to Shawn Porter's countersuit, $104 million. I have a writ of summons for Mr. Aaron Weiss. I have a writ of summons for John Barr. I have a writ of summons for Jonathan Borowitz.
Mr. Trumble, you're out of order. You're not talking specifically to 004.
No, I, I am aware of that.
So I'm asking you to either go on topic and, please.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, the, well, the topic, like I said, I'm here on behalf of the Washington County Circuit Court right now. I don't know a better time to reach you guys. You guys are all active.
If you're not gonna speak about the Texas Amendment, RZ 004, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat.
Okay, but that, and that's fine.
Please, dude, because we want to give you a chance to talk, but please stay on topic.
That, that's why I don't even really know the topic right now, is the fact that I have That, that's why I don't even really know the topic right now, is the fact that I have to serve a counter lawsuit for Mr. Porter's $104 million counter claim, so-
Levi-
Yes?
If you sit down, I will take care of you after the-
You will take, you will accept these documents?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. For, for the record, he is accepting service, so we don't have any evasion from the government right here. Again, $104 million counter lawsuit for civil rights violations by Mr. Shawn Porter. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next up is Shawn Porter.
All righty, so basically, what the state is saying is that you guys have no authority to override whatever they do in Annapolis, and that the citizens that elected you guys wasted their vote because Annapolis has final say on everything in the county. I don't know if you noticed, that's literally the trend here. They're saying you don't have any rights to say manufactured homes, no, manufactured homes, yes. You don't have the right to say where a halfway house goes. The government's overreaching from Annapolis, and you guys are all basically useless, empty suits, which I've been maintaining for quite some, some time now. But yeah, basically, people should be able to build whatever the fuck they want on their property, and should not be interfered with by some drunken, kid-killing, son-of-a-bitch in a suit like you guys, or anyone in Annapolis. So at least on this one, I actually agree with it, because Annapolis is saying to you guys, specifically you, Randy, to fuck off, and that you cannot keep people from building tiny homes, kit homes, manufactured homes, things like that. I looked at all these things in the past, and some of them are, are pretty good, and it's a way to build affordable housing in a place where taxes are going through the roof because of the drunken spending of Michelle Gordon by repaving roads in front of her sister's house, and then having tree work done on her property outside of the right of way. So basically, this is a way to combat your all's reckless spending is by allowing people to build cheaper homes, you know, which does lower your tax base. You're not gonna get as much money on a manufactured home, because it's not gonna be worth as much when it's finished. But yeah, basically, I agree with Annapolis for once, which, man, I really, I can, I can almost never say that I agree with Annapolis unless we're talking about like beer specials, you know, downtown, you know? But basically, it's good when Annapolis stands up for the citizens, which is almost never. They basically usually just bend us over and have their way with us, like prom date on prom night in 1995. But anyway, it's, it's nice to see that, for once, they're thinking of us, and they're taking away your ability to do something, which is to restrict the construction of tiny homes, kit homes, modular homes, and things like that. So I'm in support of this, but again, you, Jill Baker, God bless her soul for what she has to put up with, especially, I apologize for what's coming next. Anyhow, basically, you guys have no authority, so if you want to agree with Annapolis on this, do it or don't do it. It's not gonna really affect anything. People are still gonna be able to build whatever they want, and you guys aren't gonna be able to, you know, grift off of it, or charge extortion fees, payoffs, bribes, or kickbacks to allow manufactured homes to be constructed in certain areas. So it's basically taking away people like Jeff Klein's ability to extort people for bribes. So that's, that's kind of good. But my last statement is just my statement that I always do, which is my deep heartfelt belief that y'all are a bunch of communist motherfuckers. I've got on special patriotic underwear today, just to show my patriotism. So anyway, this is my thought, my deep heartfelt belief of you guys. As always, that is what I think of you, is you kiss my American ass, you're not any of those motherfuckers.
Okay, your time is up.
Oh, thank you, Jeff.
That concludes citizen comments, public input. Now it's time for the commissioners' questions only. Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none? Meeting is now closed. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed. Next on the agenda, proclamation for Citizens Emergency Preparedness Month. Gentlemen, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Alan Bethany, Director of Emergency Management Communications. So for Preparedness Month, since the inception of 2004 September, has been observed as a Preparedness Month in the nation. This is a time that we encourage our community to prepare for emergencies by making emergency supply kits, family emergency plans, and storing a little extra food and water in case there's an emergency. The goal for our citizens is to be self-sufficient for at least three to five days, with seven days being optimal. Also, when you're preparing, do not forget your pets. The Department of Emergency Management has been working hard this month to sign up as many county residents to the county's alerting system, WASHCO MD Alerts. This site can be located on the county's website under the Emergency Management tab, and you can sign up that way. Our grand finale for Preparedness Month is the Preparedness Expo this Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00, at the Public Safety Training Center right off of Sharpsburg Pike. We're having numerous events for kids and adults to learn about preparedness, food prep, how to build emergency kits, CPR, canine demos, and a helicopter will be landing, depending on the weather. So I hope to see you all there.
Is there a projected time for the helicopter? I know, say it's perfect.
Somewhere between 10:00 and 2:00. Depending on the emergencies.
Could you narrow it down to three hours?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for Alan before we do the proclamation?
This Saturday, September 27th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. At the Public Safety Training Center located off of Sharpsburg Pike.
On behalf of the Board of the Washington County Commissioners, Citizens Emergency Preparedness Month, September 2025 proclamation. Whereas emergencies and disasters can strike at any time, often without warning, and can only have devastating effects on our communities. And whereas, it's essential for all citizens to be prepared for emergencies by having a plan, building an emergency kit, staying informed of potential health hazards. And whereas, the safety and well-being of our community depends on the preparedness and resilience of every individual, family, and organizations in our community. And whereas, National Preparedness Month is observed each September to promote family and community disaster planning throughout the year. And whereas, whereas staff from Emergency Management, Emergency Services, Fire, and EMS, and Police Departments, recognize the importance of taking proactive steps to enhance our readiness for emergencies and to support our first responders who are on the front lines during disasters. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, do hereby recognize the month of September 2025 as a Citizens Emergency Preparedness Month in Washington County. And we encourage all citizens to take step to prepare for emergencies by creating a family emergency plan, assembling an emergency supply kit, and staying informed about the risk in our community presented this day, September 2025. Congratulations, thanks to each and every one of you. That's yours.
Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
And could you also say our dispatch team? And don't forget our 911 dispatchers to the front line also. Thank you all very much. Let's go up front and get a photograph, please. Thank you. Commissioners?
Look into.
You guys, you guys in the middle, hook someone in, you crop, yeah. Team effort.
That's great. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Next on the agenda, Kelsey, please introduce yourself, yourselves, and the matter.
Good morning, Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer.
David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services.
This morning, we're bringing forth Advanced Life Support Service memorandum, memorandum of understanding and a joint billing agreement. The county seeks to establish uniform pricing procedures and practices for the provision of paramedic intercept services. This fee will apply anytime an ambulance is staffed for only basic life support, and subsequently, subsequently requires advanced life support service delivery from the county as part of the patient's pre-hospital care. Accordingly, the county has established a $350 fee that will be applicable whenever a DES employee provides ALS service to a patient being transported by an EMS company's BLS-staffed ambulance. DES staff will complete the required patient care report within 24 hours of transport to document the services provided. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, questions? Who pays? Does insurance cover that for-
So the company that does the transport will collect payment from the insurance company?
Our $350 proposed fee, is that in line with other jurisdictions?
I really can't answer that. It's a number that we looked at, the investment of time and the effort, and felt that that was a fair remuneration of the cost incurred.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Four oh. Thank you very much. Number six, Kelsey, I believe you're back. Please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Good morning, Kelsey Mace, Chief Financial Officer.
David Hayes, Director of Emergency Services.
And the next item we have is the billing and collection policy for emergency transport. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that all emergency medical transports are billed in a fair and consistent manner. The provisions in this policy were developed based on recommendations from the county's contracted billing company. Other jurisdictions' policies and similar provisions contained in other accounts receivable policies maintained by the Division of Budget and Finance.
Commissioners? Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going to tab seven. I think Brandy and-
I'm not sure if I can present this, it's a sole-source item. It requires four out of five commissioners.
I would, I think we could present it, and it will go from there, and see what happens. Anyway, present for the public? Would you?
Okay, all right.
Please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Dr. Neil, Chief Technical Officer, Information Systems.
Ms. Franciano, State's Attorney.
The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the sole-source procurement, PUR 1769, move to authorize, to award the sole-source procurement for prosecutor software licensing, training, and support fees from Parpale Computer Systems Incorporated of St. Louis, Missouri, for the use by the state's attorney's office in the amount of $81,106 for a one-time setup fee for installation of services, professional services, training services, and customization, and for three one-year annual subscription fees of $101,000 per year. This award is contingent on the final approval of the contract with the county attorney's office. The state's attorney's office wishes to apply Sections 1 through 106.2A, 1 and 2 of the Code of Local Public Laws of Washington County, Maryland, to the procurement. This section states that a sole-source procurement is authorized and permissible when, one, only one source exists that meets the county's requirements, and/or, two, the compatibility of equipment, accessories, and replacement parts is paramount to the consideration. The prosecutor's software and support being recommended for award will expand and enhance the state's attorney's system, which currently utilizes several programs for case management. The software will replace the county's multi-program, multi-step process. This agreement shall be for a term of three years, and will automatically renew for an additional one-year term unless either party gives an, a notice to not renew. And again, this request requires four out of five of the commissioners to move forward. Funding is available in the CIP project for the purchase of the software.
Commissioners, any comments? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Okay, I have first and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh is registered. Thank you very much. Brandy, I believe you're up again. Please introduce yourself in the matter.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Dave Mason with Solid Waste.
The next recommendation is the bid award, PUR 1757, move toward the contract services at transfer stations and on-site at the 40 West Landville to the responsive, responsible bidder, hand-handle dumpsters out of Martinsburg, West Virginia, based on a total sum bid for locations 1 through 6 of $518,558.50. In the agenda report form, it does say that this was contingent upon them registering with the Maryland State Assessment and Taxation. They've already done so, so they are, they have met the requirements of the contract. On August 6th, 2025, the county advertised the bid, and on September 3rd, 2025, we did accept bids. 10 bids were received and six, 10 bids were accessed on the online portal, and six bids were received. The county shall be in a contract under the terms of a two-year period to be renewed up to three consecutive one-year periods. Funding is available in the department's operating budget for these services.
Commissioners, questions? Is there a second?
Second.
I have first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four oh. Tab nine, Brandy, I believe you're back. Please introduce yourself in the matter again.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Dave Mason with Solid Waste.
The next recommendation is the bid award 17, PUR 1758, move towards the contract for recycling drop-off services under option number one, for hauling of single-stream recyclables to the responsive, responsible bidder, Apple Valley Waste out of Kearnsville, West Virginia, for a total sum bid of $61,405. We also are asking to award option number two to Apple Valley Waste out of Kearnsville, West Virginia. This is for the processing of the single-stream recyclables, and is for a total of $150,000 a year. Lastly, under alternate number one, for segregated cardboard, we are moving to award Republic Services out of Hagerstown, Maryland, for a total sum of $37,456.64. On August 6th, 2025, the county advertised the bid, and on September 3rd, we did accept bids. The invitation to bid was listed on the state of Maryland's e-Maryland Marketplace Advantage website, the new online bidding site for the county. 10 companies downloaded the document, five bids were received. This contract is for a one-year period commencing November 1st, 2025, with the option for the county to renew up to two consecutive one-year periods. Funding is available in the department's operating budget for these services.
Commissioners?
I have a question.
Please.
Okay, what is single stream again?
Instead of separating your plastics, papers, it's, it's all thrown in one container, taken to the facility, it's sorted and separated.
And then we have to, but this is, we are paying for the recyclables to be taken from us?
Correct.
Years ago, we used to get money for recyclables, correct? Are we required, let me rephrase that, are we required to recycle by law?
We are required to have a recycling program by the state of Maryland.
Can we define what a recyclable program is?
I mean, what we're doing is-
We can collect it?
We can collect it.
Do we have to dispose of it, or do we have to pay someone, or can we- Do we have to dispose of it, or do we have to pay someone, or can we just put it into a designated area of our, it was man-... facility?
No.
We just dump it all there?
No, we have to recycle it.
Oh, sorry.
We have to, we have to process it for recycling.
And the state mandates that we have to do that? Without any, they're just passing the cost on to us with another mandate?
Yes.
Do they contribute at all to the recycling programs in the state?
Not, not that I'm aware of, anyway.
Okay. And what would happen if we stopped the recycling program?
I do not have an answer to that question. I'd get you an answer, but I do not have one.
I mean, is there a punitive action if we just stop doing it?
That I don't know. I, I would have to look into it. I mean, this, this program that we've been running has been this way for years and years and years.
I understand that, I'm just wondering if there's, rather than paying for something that we don't, it's not really benefiting the county, how is it benefiting the county? Just...
Well, we're, I mean, we're saving space in a landfill, which benefits county taxpayers.
Okay.
I mean, you figure, we, we, we're talking...
So, there is a benefit to the county?
There is a benefit. And recycling is one of those things where, you know, there's a certain popular population that says we should do it, it's the right thing to do. The other side is, well, if we should do it because it's the right thing to do, why do we have to pay for it?
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, we are, we are required to have recycling programs, we are rated through the state, you know, we have that MRA number which was talked about, you know, before, you know, we're doing, this is probably the bare minimum of what we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to support as written. Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four oh, thank you very much. Tab 10, I think Brandy, welcome back again. Please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Zane Ral, Deputy Director of Highways.
The next recommendation is an intergovernmental cooperative purchase, INTG 25-0209, move to authorize by resolution for the highway department to purchase two new 2027 Mack Granite 4x2 plow trucks with J&amp;J dump beds and plow package in the amount of $298,804.25 each for a total sum of $597,608.50 from Baltimore Truck Center out of Hagerstown, Maryland, and to utilize a cooperative contract that was awarded by Sourcewell to Baltimore Truck. The highway department is requesting to purchase these two vehicles to replace two plow trucks that exceed the county's vehicle and equipment types usage guidelines. The Code of Public Laws of Washington County provides that the board of county commissioners may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another government entity as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of that contract. The county will benefit from a direct cost savings with this purchase due to the economies of scale that the contract has leveraged. Funds are budgeted and available in the department's capital improvement budget for this purchase.
Commissioners, comments?
Zane, this meets all the requirements that you absolutely need, you're not trying to shortchange on anything in order to reduce some cost.
No, no, it's, it's the same spec that we've had for probably, 10 or 15 years.
Okay.
With in mind, it's built for plow and snow, number one.
Okay, good.
But no, it's, it's what we, what we...
Motion to approve.
Or a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving to tab 11, Brandy, once again, thank you.
Brandy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Alan McThee, Director of Emergency Management, Communications.
The item we have for you this morning is a correction for a sole-source award. We originally brought it in August of 26 of 2025. Today's recommendation is to correct the previous award of $2,306,963.76 to the new total of $2,681,763.76. What we have corrected here was the yearly maintenance fee. We had it as $70,760. It actually is $74,960 totaling $374,800 to be paid in full for the first year. This was a sole-source due to the compatibility of equipment already in existence in the department. The request also requires all four of five commissioners to move forward with this correction. Funding is available through a grant, there were no county funds requested for this purchase.
Commissioners, any comments? Is there a motion to approve with the correction as stated?
Motion to approve with correction as stated.
Second.
Have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four oh, thank you very much. Now moving to tab 12. Folks, please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Karen Baker, buyer in the purchasing department.
John Swager, Stormwater Watershed Services.
The recommendation I have for you today is bid award PUR 1639, motion to authorize the Department of Stormwater and Watershed Services to utilize contract PUR 1639 with Patriot Land and Wildlife Management Services Incorporated for maintenance and repair of various locations in the total lump sum amount of $65,783.95 based on the estimate received. The location and pricing for work at each stormwater pond is listed in the table on the ARF. Funding is available in the department's operating budget for this service.
Commissioners, questions? How many stormwater ponds we have?
105 that we're managing right now, and then Highways has about 125.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four oh, thank you very much. Moving to tab 13. Good morning, sir, please introduce yourself in the matter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carston Irons, Office of Grant Management. We would ask that you move to approve the application for an acceptance of funds for fiscal year 26 Enough Capacity Building Proposal to the Governor's Office for Children, requesting $74,581 in acceptance of the funds as awarded. The Washington County Office of Grant Management, on behalf and at the direction of the local management board, requests approval to submit a capacity building grant proposal to the Office of Grant, to the Office for Children, Governor's Office for Children, for fiscal year 2026, in response to their notice of funding availability through the Enough Act. The proposal requests funding for partner organizations to provide assistance in capacity building towards eliminating child poverty in designated communities in Washington County, as well as the support for county administrative expenses.
Commissioners, questions? Would there be a motion to approve the application acceptance of the funds as stated?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, have a first and a second, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four oh, thank you, sir. Moving to tab 14. Gentlemen, please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Richard Lesh, Grant Manager, Office of Grant Management.
David Chisholm, Deputy Director, Emergency Services. We are here today to request a motion to approve the submission of the fiscal year 2026 cardiac device grant application through the Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Service, Services Systems, in the amount of $29,000 and accept the awarded funding. This grant will allow the Division of Emergency Services to purchase the most current version of the LifePak cardiac monitor defibrillator and will begin the replacement of the outdated 15 devices. According to the notice of funding opportunity, awardees must fund at least 50% of the total cost of the awarded cardiac devices. The total cost of the devices will be $58,000, and the $29,000 matching funds will be paid from the Division of Emergency Services Machinery and Equipment Account for their, in their operating budget. The Office of Grant Management has reviewed the grant fund lines, and other than the dollar-for-dollar match requirement, there are no unusual conditions associated with this funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Harvey's left the room, do you still want to go forward with the vote or we're going to return? Commissioners?
I think we, I think we could go forward.
Okay, um, have a first and a second, please note that Derek Harvey's left the room. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, three oh. Thank you, thank you. Now going to tab 15. Gentlemen, please introduce yourselves in the matter.
Good morning, Andrew Ashland, Director of Public Works.
Good morning, Jamie Dick, Deputy Director of Public Works, Parks and Recreation.
We're here for consensus and informational purposes regarding an upcoming project that we're working on with the Black Rock Golf Board. It's, as you see up on the screen in your packet, we're calling the Black Rock Golf Course Training Center. The Black Rock Golf Course is a 501(c)(3), formerly titled the Washington County Public Golf Corporation. Staff is working with the golf board and preparing a capital fundraising campaign to construct a new training center at the Black Rock Golf Course without county funds. The training center will upgrade and improve the existing driving range and include amenities such as covered and open driving bays, a short game practice area, and synthetic grass punting and chipping greens. These improvements will provide year-round opportunities for community organizations, student athletes, and golfers of all ages to develop and refine their skills. To date, the golf board, in its efforts to manage donations, have established an account with the Community Foundation of Washington County, Maryland. The foundation is set up to receive contributions, handle accounting, and issue donor acknowledgement letters and IRS reporting. The golf board also intends to use its John Howard Trust Funds as a base for this capital campaign, and once the project is constructed, the, the thought and idea is they would transition the community foundation account into an investment account to support future facility upgrades and golf education programs. So, in order to help finance this project, the golf board is seeking to solicit naming rights for the training center at a starting target of $5,000 per year for a five-year term, and we base this around a sample document that was used for the Public Safety Training Center. The naming rights would apply solely to the training center and not the golf course or clubhouse, and we anticipate that that would include a fixed name sign on the covered structure. These proceeds from the naming rights would be paid to the golf board to support the training center construction, maintenance, upgrades, and related golf training programs. I have Jamie Dick here with me, and he can help share, if needed, about the role that the golf course plays in the community with many nonprofit tournaments, as well as the site for our high school golf programs and youth golf clinics and programs as well. So, as I mentioned, the 5,000 per year amounts a targeted amount for solicitations, the actual awards would depend on offers, and probably most importantly for this board, the idea would be that we would solicit that, the golf board would evaluate, and ultimately any naming rights must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners to ensure consistency with the county's image and values. We also plan to recognize one-time capital donors over a defined contribution threshold, which is stated in the brochure, I believe $500, so you can get your name out there on the facility and, and recognize your contribution with, with that donor amount. And as I mentioned, this is also framed around what was done, Public Safety Training Center for some of the rooms and facilities at that location. So, again, at this time, just informational consensus to make sure we're, we're on the right track with moving forward in this manner. Are there any questions?
Kirsten, okay with the consensus of moving forward, it's unofficial vote, it's just a consensus to continue, correct?
Correct.
I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
I see four nods, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, moving on to tab 17, Chip.
Tab 16. More than 16.
More than 16, my correction, tab 16.
Jeff Rose, Director of Human Resources.
Dr. Neal, COO, Information Systems.
David Elliott, Director of IT.
Staff is seeking approval to extend an offer to Charles Cousins for position number 1903, the senior network engineer. The offer is a grade 16, step 21, at a salary of $131,352 per year. This is a very competitive candidate pool, we had 46 total applicants, the IT team interviewed the six finalists. Charles was identified as the best fit for the team. In addition to scoring higher overall, Charles showed a greater growth potential, adaptability, and leadership readiness, potential.
Commissioners, questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, tab 17. Attorney Zach Kiefer, you're up.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Zachary Kiefer, County Attorney, here with the recommended motion to reappoint Karen Fetterman Henry to a three-year term and reappoint Alan Levin also to a three-year term for the Washington County Ethics Commission. Ms. Fetterman Henry and Mr. Levin's terms expired this year, and they have expressed their willingness to continue to serve on the Ethics Commission. Both are valuable members of the commission, thorough, thoughtful, contributing greatly to the discussions, deliberations, and final written decisions. This recommendation is endorsed by the remainder of the Ethics Commission as well.
Commissioners, thoughts, comments?
Motion to approve.
Have a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four oh, thank you, Zach. Next up, tab 18, our favorite topic of the day, Kelsey Cadel, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kelsey Cadel, Business Specialist for Agriculture with the Department of Business and Economic Development. Today, I'm honored to be here to announce our 2025-2026 Washington County Farm of the Year. This year marks the 15th anniversary of recognizing a Washington County farm that exemplifies excellence in agriculture. This award honors farms that not only demonstrate leadership in production and land stewardship, but also serve as advocates for agriculture through community involvement, preservation, and unwavering dedication to the future of farming. It is my pleasure to announce that the 2025-2026 Washington County Farm of the Year is Crownstone Farm, located in Clear Spring, Maryland, co-owned and operated by John and Pam Schnebley, along with J.C. and Beth Schnebley. Located on nearly 300 acres in Clear Spring, Maryland, Crownstone Farm is proud and historic dairy operation that has continuously been working since 1817, making it one of, if not the, oldest continuously operating dairy farm in the county. The farm's name honors a piece of history, the Mason-Dixon Five Mile Marker, known as a crownstone, which still proudly stands on their property today. Crownstone Farm is home to approximately 450 hard cattle. Of those, around 200 are lactating cows being milked, producing an impressive 80,000 pounds of milk each week, which is approximately 9,300 gallons. The Schnebley Farm family grows all of their own feed on their farm, including corn, soybeans, and a variety of grains, which are used to create their TMR feed. TMR stands for Total Mixed Ration, which is a balanced feed method that ensures every bite that their cow eats is packed with the exact nutrients needed for health and productivity. They also produce all their own hay and straw, maintaining high levels of self-sufficiency and quality control. At Crownstone Farm, they are deeply committed to sustainable farming practices, participating in the cover crop program to improve soil health, reduce erosion, and protect long-term viability of their land for generations to come. In addition to their impressive production and conservation efforts, Crownstone Farm is deeply committed to agriculture education and community engagement. Over the years, Crownstone Farm has welcomed countless school groups, local clubs, and visitors for tours. One of their most memorable and meaningful highlights for the family was hosting the National Guernsey Association, where over 300 guests from across the country and several other nations gathered on their farm for a full day of learning and agricultural appreciation. The next generation of agriculture leaders is already shining at Crownstone Farm. Caroline Schnebley, granddaughter of John and Pam... Caroline Schnebley, granddaughter of John and Pam, has represented Washington County as the Farm Bureau Ambassador, sharing her personal experiences promoting agriculture awareness at the local, state, and national levels. Her voice and advocacy reflect the strength and resilience and pride that her family's farming legacy leaves. Congratulations to John, Pam, J.C., Beth, and the entire Schnebley family behind me at Crownstone Farm on being named the 2025-2026 Washington County Farm of the Year. Your longstanding commitment to agriculture, dedication to the community, engagement, and passion for preserving our farming heritage truly represents the best of Washington County agriculture.
Now we can applaud. Kelsey, would you like to, for a comment, and then to introduce their guests that are with them today? Come up and, yeah, thank you. Yeah, introduce your family too.
Good morning, I'm John Schnebley. This is my wife Pam, my son J.C. and his wife Beth. This is my brother Bill, his wife Suzie, my sister Mary, her son Lucas. This is my nephew Brian, nephew Matthew, and his wife Stacy.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would y'all join me up for the, for proclamation?
We'll do it up there, they've got a big crowd.
You two here, we'll talk to our family down.
Yeah, everybody, come on.
Move forward there. You can't get out of all this public. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll get you all in the center. Congratulations to you. Congratulations. I know, you too. Congratulations, congratulations. I know you, I recognize you. Hi there, and sir, good day to you. We might have to do two rows. Kate, you can here give us direction.
Sure.
Congratulations.
We can add the. Yep. I have come forward. Why don't you go, Matthew?
Two hundred. You ready? Eighty thousand pounds. You hit the whole house?
Yep. Okay.
We're all ready. Don't worry. We're gonna get it up here.
Get a question. Yep. Good question. Yep. Luke, Michelle, can find it.
Oh, yes. Okay. Worst question?
Okay. That's it. Maybe you can find it a little bit, and that's perfect. Okay.
We ready? On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we are very proud to present this proclamation, proclamation, the Crownstone Farm. I think you almost said, we exploring all this.
Yeah. We heard that.
On behalf of the County Commissioners of Washington County, we hereby wish to extend our sincerest congratulations to Crownstone Farm for being named the 2025-2026 Washington County Farm of the Year. Your dedication to excellence and milking practices, stewardship of the land, and commitment to the quality has set a benchmark for others to follow and made you one of the oldest continuously operating dairy farms in Washington County. We wish you many more years of continued success. Congratulations and thank you. This is for you on the whole too. Yeah, there we go.
Okay. Yes, I can see you.
Everybody find a place.
Yes, just peek through there. Yep. That's perfect, perfect, okay. Here we go. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Very well done. Thank you. Congratulations. You got the whole class.
Good job. Good job. The UK jobs.
Tab 25.
He goes up.
Well, he survived.
Yeah, we can see it.
We have to deal with the bar.
Let me text Teresa.
Quit talking, we want to get out of here. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Go right by and watch that posted up in your farm lane too.
Thank you, guys.
All right, motion to go to closed session.
Motion to go to closed session.
Second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed session.